Let's call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's do a roll call.
James Hamilton.
Here.
Wayne Bryant.
Here.
Ron Charam.
Here.
James Davis.
Here.
Brock Ellis.
Here.
Alrighty, we don't have the minutes from January. We'll have to move those to next month, so we won't have to approve those until next month. We have no old business, so new business is appointment of officers. So would anybody like the chair?
I was trying to say, I didn't know we had officers.
Nominate Greg for the chair.
Alright, we got a motion.
Motion to nominate Greg for the chair.
I got a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, and I get to do it again. Alright, so the next officer is secretary. So does anybody, if no, Ron, do you want to do?
I'll take it again if nobody wants to.
Would anybody like to make a motion for Ron to be the secretary?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, James makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
You got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by the same. Congratulations, Ron.
Long as you weren't another vice.
Alrighty, now that we got our officers, we'll move right along to consideration of requests from Betty Ann Colley for approval to convert the Bethel Baptist Church into a caregiving facility. And I believe that one's over on fourteen hundred G Street. You all are on. You just come up and state your name and...
Betty Ann Colley. And I've lived in Marlin for fifty-three years now. I am in Fort Smith. But we had an architect that just kind of drew up an outside of where the church is. We're not planning on doing anything to the outside. We're gonna try to leave it, it's a block building, so we're trying to leave it as it is. We will be redoing...
You're good.
We will be redoing the inside. I have a couple of...
We can just pass them around.
So I don't have any drawings. That's what we're trying to do on the inside yet. But what we're trying to do is make a house of three, but it is for hospice patients that are long-term, not long-term, but end-of-life, but still have, need help. And families are just kind of overcome with the care. They have just closed all the hospice unit at Mercy. And they will still have beds, and of course, everybody has home health. And this is what we're planning on doing, making this an extension of your home.
So they will have home health and this?
Right. We will provide the daily care. Like when Chad was on hospice, I had to hire people to help because the hospice nurses only come once a week unless you call them for things. How many people are familiar with hospice?
Yeah, we're...
Okay, if you're not, you may be. Anyway, it's a, it's a great program. It used to run differently thirty years ago when I got interested in it, but because there was a lot of...
Red tape?
Medicare. Well, it was, people were using this, abusing the system. So they have limited your time in the hospital to four days. And after that, you have to go home or you have to go to a nursing home. So this will be available to people. It's what we want to do.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping to do.
What's the maximum number you, you're gonna start out with?
We're just gonna start with three.
Three?
Because there are some state laws about, there's all kinds of things about you can have a house of three in a residential area as long as it's three people that agree to be cared for together.
Once you go over three, there's more?
Yes, then you have to be careful about, we, we had hoped to build a hospice house, but it's just not feasible or possible anymore because of all the medical people you have to hire. This way, the people, their hospice nurse will be the one to admit them, and they will take care of medical needs, and we will just provide the extra care like you would hire at home. Someone to take care of laundry, feeding, bathing, you know, just daily care. And we plan to do that at no charge. So we will be working for donations as soon as we know that we can do this. We, I started a fund when Chad died, so we do have some money, but not enough to purchase the property and do all the renovations, but we have enough to get started, so.
Is three always gonna be the maximum?
Probably unless state laws change.
Maybe it'll help you get your foot in the door.
Right, because in Oklahoma, they can have, they have ten.
Yeah.
One of the ones we've looked at has ten beds. But here, they only can have three. There are not any in Arkansas yet.
Oh, wow.
I've looked at one in Nashville that was just two beds. So you can start anywhere.
Start at three, see where it goes.
And you got a little bit of room to expand if you needed to on that property.
You need to hear what Tommy did.
And the reason I bring it up is, if you ever plan to do five or more, if you ever plan to hit that mark, right, your fire protection changes. Alright, so, so what I don't want to see is for you to renovate now for three and then decide it down the road, hey, I wanna do five or six, or, and then have to totally renovate again.
Right. Well, what people are doing is opening a house of three and then opening another house. Apparently, that's okay. We're just getting started as far as trying to find out all the legal things, but I'm glad you brought that up because I was not aware of that.
That's good, that's good information to add, yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
We did, we have joined a national organization that's called the Omega Home Network, and that's where we're getting a lot of our guidance from. They're based out of Tulsa. The person that started, she was a registered nurse, is a registered nurse. She had done hospice. She started out by renting, like twenty years ago, rented an apartment in Tulsa. It was a two-bedroom apartment, and she put one guest, we call them guests because they're not our patients. We put one guest, she put one guest in one bedroom and one guest in the other one, and then she just cared for them at night herself for people that were struggling at home to take care of their loved one at home. So really, our caregiver that will be there will just be like a family member that's in the home. Think of the ninety-year-old couple, their kids are scattered, they don't even live around here anymore. And they, you know, the wife can't even turn the husband, you know, toward the end as the patient starts actively dying. And so we're just that extra help for them to be able to come.
You'll be...
We'll work just like a church. It's, I mean, it's simply on community support and donations, which I think will come because with Baptists closing their inpatient unit and Mercy closing their inpatient unit, there are no resources and people can't afford to put a family member in a nursing home at seven thousand dollars a month. It's crazy. Now, some of these people may stay at home until the end when it gets hard, and when they're actively dying, they may come and just be there for a week or ten days, you know. It might be a brief stay, but...
They said in some of the Omega Home news that they could be there. Their average stay was between two and ten days.
Those people want to stay at home as long as they can.
Yeah, we know.
I'm a physical therapist and I did come up in hospice for about thirty years. But when it gets to the end and it gets hard, and they have no resources or family support, you know, they either have to go on Medicaid and spend down all their assets, let the whole another ball of wax, you know, or they have enormous expense. It's just cost prohibitive, you know. And private care is expensive. I have a friend on hospice in Denver now. She started twenty-four-seven, twenty bucks an hour, over fifteen thousand dollars a month. I mean, it's awful.
Takes your whole, takes your whole life savings.
Absolutely.
The one thing that Tommy hit on.
Y'all be cooking on, on the premises.
You know, we have not, we, there is a kitchen there at the church, and we're trying to decide how to work with that because that would be the only thing that would be, you know, we'd have to follow the guidance, the law, health laws if we provide meals or cook meals. But we may, some people have said these people are on limited diet, some of them not even eating. So we might just wanna order food, order whatever they want and bring that in. So we're just not...
The property in Tulsa said that they, they have a, probably a three-million-dollar property. It's amazing. It's on South Mango Road and just the South Tulsa area, you know, it's unbelievable. But of course, they're very integrated in their community because they've been doing it for twenty, twenty-one years. But she said if they have family members that are trying to come in and out, or maybe they come into town because it's their family members that end of life. They have El Chico and Chili's and these different restaurants that just give them gift cards. And so, you know, the person that's there at the home, kind of overseeing everything, kind of shares those as people need them, you know, they really have a financial need and they need assistance with meals. Often, they share stuff like that. And in Tulsa, in that one, it's called the Claire House, they, they do cook a meal at lunch that for everybody that's there, the guests, any family members, the caregiver that's working, just anybody that's there, they prepare a meal that's done by volunteers. And they did say that that, that was the only thing that fell under any oversight was that they, that their kitchen fell under the oversight of the...
Health department.
Health department, of my health department. But she said for other meals, if the families had needs, they would usually have with these gift cards from different restaurants. And the patient often is, they might be eating oatmeal, I mean, a microwave thing, you know, they're end-of-life. They're not gonna be eating oatmeal.
Well, I think it's a, it's a great idea, like Tommy was saying. I want you guys to succeed and, and expand, and I think if you would get with Tommy and you could probably do a lot of the, the work before you'd go to expand for the five or more. Wouldn't you think that would be right, Tommy, to go ahead and kind of pre?
Well, that'll be their decision.
Right.
Of course, but, you know, like I said, if you, if you, if you renovate the building for three and you decide to go up, you're gonna, you're gonna have to redo everything you already did.
Right.
So, so you really kind of need to decide.
And that's the fire protection.
Doesn't matter what you do today, you need to know what your future, what your long-range plan is.
That's the fire protection, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean... Y'all selected an architect, right?
Yes, Casey Harrow is the architect, but we haven't gotten any prices yet on the remodel.
I mean, we're just, in fact, we made an offer on the property, and that gave us thirty days of discover. So we've had an inspection, we've had to term up, contract go out, I mean, we're just, and we're still in our thirty days of discover.
Tommy mentioned earlier about the fire protection. If you have five or less residents there as it is, or guests, you have, there is a change in the fire protect, you can use the residential fire standard. But the minute you go beyond five, you're into the institutional fire standard, which is much more expensive and more. But you have, that's why Tommy will be looking at it when drawings come in and evaluating what's there. We will look at it. We don't make that decision, but we can tell you what the answer may or may not be. And, and the money is always a critical thing in doing the alteration and setting the system.
I just, I think right now, if we can make a go with three, that'll be all we can handle.
I don't think we could get more than five rooms in there. We're wanting to leave the little sanctuary and, to be transparent, my daddy's Baptist preacher, so, or was. So, but most of these properties have a chapel, so we're gonna kind of leave, you know, everybody has a church connection. So there might be, if people want to have a small service there because they don't have any other connection, does that change any of the fire safety things for like a brief thirty-minute service or something if they wanted to have a?
No, it won't change anything. In other words, once you're converting the bu, the building to, to industrial, under the fire code, it'll be called I two industrial. That will cover the assembly aspect also.
Okay, great.
That is...
Which is the chapel.
Right.
But we can do that with three people or is that only?
No, you, you can do that with three. You're gonna have to have a fire sprinkler system, period.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, so, but it, it's a matter of which type.
Right.
And if you're, if you're less than five, you can go with a cheaper system.
But you can have five.
But you can have, if you hit five, that's your mark where you have to go to a commercial. Right. So, so, and that changes from, from PVC, CPVC plumbing for the sprinkler system to metal pipe.
Right.
So that's why I said, well, I mean, if you, if you ever have a plan, ever, of doing five or more, you would, you should really think about going ahead and...
Doing the metal pipe.
Doing the metal pipe now so that you don't have to renovate the whole, the whole building again.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Alright, I'd just say, I think, Ms., I think your contribution to the city and your husband's and your contribution to the nation is unmatched, and I appreciate what you're doing. And I'd be happy to be the first one to make a motion for the consideration of request from Betty Ann Colley for approval to convert the Bethel Baptist Church into a caregiving facility. Alright, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We had a second. Alright, let's just do a roll call vote.
James Hamilton.
Yes.
Wayne Bryant.
Yes.
Ron Charam.
Yes.
James Davis.
Yes.
Brock Ellis.
Yes. You're approved. We'll take this to the, we'll give this consideration to the board of directors and we'll go that route. And so far, you got our blessing, and, and thank you very much for everything you've done. Like Brock said, it's, it's, what you're doing for the community is, is a great, great thing that you're doing.
Well, the community did a lot for us when Chad came back.
You know, Chad came and saw me when I was in elementary school and showed me what Army here was. Yeah, and I still remember that day.
Would you all like to keep one of those?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
Is it alright to have?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Colley.
Moving right along, consideration of preliminary plans for the Mercy Chaffee Clinic addition. You'll state your name. If you wouldn't mind, just move that mic right up and just push it up. There we go.
Absolutely. Caleb Bilbo with Olson Engineering, he represents the project. I don't know how many of you may have seen the plans previously. It looks like some folks have copies. I've got three additional if anyone needs them.
They're in the back of their packet.
Okay, gotcha.
We try hard.
Oh, I understand.
They do good.
A brief summary here before we get into details. So this is an expansion of roughly sixty-five hundred square feet to the Mercy Clinic at Chad Colley Boulevard. Includes an addition of forty-six stalls. Utilities are majoritably already extended out to the side as this was a somewhat planned addition prior. But beyond that, that's, that's kind of the basis, and just happy to field any questions.
What's Mr. Coors' recommendation?
Aren't you finished?
There, there is a little bit of coordination going on. I think, I think Steve's aware of this, he all may not be, but coordination between the College of Health and Mercy, they're just kind of work out some of the finer details on the south edge. You know, of course, there will be a connection, which we're showing is a future connection from Chad Colley over to Coyote Trail. So I think that some of the question here is, my understanding, that property has been sold there to the south with the intention that it's going to be some sort of childcare facility in time. But whether that's six months it begins construction or a year or longer is somewhat in debate. So it's, it's really up to the College of Mercy on how exactly they do it. I think temporarily, the plan is to go ahead and install the parking shown just to make sure that the clinic has that available parking to be able to have students and everyone else that they need there. And then as time progresses, if we need to adjust, add obviously a new drive connection there to the south and what have you, we can do that, so.
I'll give y'all a couple of heads up. What Caleb has said, if you look at the sheet and it's labeled C one-one in the very right-hand corner. You look down at the little, little right-hand corner in the name tag. Okay, the addition is shown in, with hatches around the outside. What he's talking about, if you look on the, to the lower-left quarter of the page, you'll see the driveway going in, okay? The standards for the college are, are different. That's a planned zoning district, a PZD. And the landscaping standards and the plantings that started out, everybody was worried with the Chaffee Guides, a PZD allows the college to make the calls for what they have in their product. So what Caleb and them have done is you can see the letter and the driveway going into the new parking, and you see the hatch or where the addition is, and if you look at your print, real faint outline to the north or to the upper part of the page, you'll see the existing clinic. What they've looked at, and I'll tell you that I've talked to Kyle Parker out there at the college, and they're looking at not only a drive through and trying to what's known as Coyote Trail, which was the old Harry Carey Road, but this road would loop around. And we had a request today for soil and utility locations to the north of there, right on Frontier Road, and just off the corner there. What he talked about, about the utilities is water and sewer. The sewer is off to the down page on, when you're looking at it. Parking is geared up so that if they have, if you have to get in or out, it will be an easy run, depending on what they do with this addition. If you look at the following pages, you'll see some contours where they're looking at stormwater and drainage. They pretty well, Caleb and, and company have put this thing together where you can tell what you're gonna have in your materials, you're gonna tell preventative measures in the construction, parking guidelines, and this is, this is probably one of the more complete sets that we've got and have seen in here. And he can tell you about more. We've had multiple conversations about how and what you can and can't do, and this is one set that engineer and architect and people that have worked on this are a lot further down the line. It's an addition, and their additions are always tricky in matching, in matching the floor heights, foundation types, and this is clay over shale and sandstone at depth.
That's correct, yeah.
Anything?
No, I'd say nothing, nothing more beyond that. We are aware, we have geotech report, which I'd be happy to provide if anyone wants to see it. But yeah, the soils there are, they're not bad, but they're not ideal, I would say. So there's a, a plan for, they'll either do micro piles, which basically think of, you know, small columns that they'll rest the building on. They'll go fourteen feet or so deep. It's that, or they cut out, I think it's six or seven feet of the upper level of soil and then replace it. So that's what's being suggested. The current building has noticed some foundation issues, cracking, doors not really wanting to work. So it's been checked before, so we're trying to make sure we get it right this go-around, so.
Anybody got any questions?
Motion to approve.
Alright, we got a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Alright, rock, paper, scissors, so who gets a second? Well, let Stretch have this one. There you go. Alright, roll call vote.
James Hamilton.
Yes.
Wayne Bryant.
Yes.
Ron Charam.
Yes.
James Davis.
Yes.
Brock Ellis.
Yes.
Alrighty, we'll move it on to the board. Alright, reports. It's up to you, Mr. Steve, on a report.
Since I've, since I've seen you all last, we got a letter in to authorizing us to go to bid on the sidewalk on the south side of Twenty-two Highway. There's several procedures you have to follow by the state bidding process. And the engineer, Mark Cook at EDM, is getting it ready to go, and it'll have to run twice in the paper. Generally speaking, around here, they'll, then they may be able to get it in times record, but more than likely, it's also picked up by the Arkansas Democrat to say it. And that's the northwest addition, and if you haven't picked it up on Sunday, that's where it is. And when I subscribe to it and I bring the, the River Valley addition sets in to Megan, and she can look at that and check for money and anything that goes with it. The second thing happened is, is we got the approval for the park grant. It will happen in March. There's a meeting down there and a ceremony coming from the public. And the Wapahdiddy, Western, that's Western Arkansas Planning and Development District, is going to administer that contract for us, and it is a nominal fee. And it is the same type of administration as Wayne Bryant and company up at Mercy Crest had because the grant for the track up there and the pavilions and the seats was all a matching grant, and it was done with Western Arkansas Planning, doing the hard work, and then we, it's kind of a do-loop that goes with it. I will tell you that the pavement project, the railroad sent the paperwork for the signatures, and the surveyor you'll see over there on Frank Street, that they've agreed to sell the right-of-way, the fifty-foot right-of-way. And Tony Anderson from Anderson Surveying will be over there laying it out, and we will get the survey to them and check and invoice, and we'll go. And the next thing is Matt, and then we'll do a, a repair of that old water crossing. It's the tank trap on Frank Street. And we'll get that ready because it, that, that street is on the twenty-twenty-six request list for state aid. And we'll try to get, we've got the overlays, and there's, Matt will tell you there's about a mile, is right, I guess it is a mile of overlays to be done on. We've got a list. They came and brought me another, another, another street today, another pair of streets, so we may get some more to look at. And...
On that, on, once it goes to bid for the sidewalk, about when do you think construction could start? You think in May?
Probably in April.
April, May?
Yeah, it depends. It's gotta go down to, after you take a local bid, even though we, and we pay upfront and then they reimburse based on progress, it has to go through the state department in these state aid projects. The park is a matching grant, and you have a double roll, a loop that we had like for Wayne and them up there. Same thing, it has, it's looked at by two parties. One, the folks that get it, and number two, the state that pays, and then whoever the administrative partner is, has it. So it's pretty well tied down. You don't wander around with one of those. If they tell you the grants for this, that's what you spend the money on, and...
I know a lot of people keep asking, when's the sidewalk gonna get built?
Now, I'll tell you the other, the last thing. I talked to them a while ago about the Chad Colley Frontier Road traffic light. It's on red light now, both directions for stop, full stops, just like a four-way stop. They had talked about waiting to pave. They will probably mark up, right now, they're thinking, one of the things kicked around is to mark it up where we can use it. And common sense says it'll be in reduced speed because the final paving will be when they're all the way done and they crank up and do it. because the final paving will be when they're all the way done and they crank up and do it at one time. Simply because economics, it costs money to get the paving machine out there. And the batch plants, and Matt and I have seen that from firsthand. When they get cold weather, and this is a fake spring right now, but when they get cold weather, the asphalt plant shuts down. And when it thaws out, that's when you'll get back to it. You gotta have, I think it's forty-five and rising on the temperatures before you can even stop to think about it. Things have come a long ways since the old days, ain't they? The methods and the primer and stuff they use is a lot more flexible than it used to be. And that's a sum total of it.
All righty, anybody from the public like to talk about anything on the agendas? No? Ron, would you do the honors?
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Folks, have a great day.
Thank you all.